All right, everybody, it's Wednesday, September 4th at 9:00 AM. We'll start our work session. Sean. What? Nope, sorry, uh, regular meeting. Sean, would you lead us to the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, kick it off with a public comment. Is that what everybody's here for, to kind of weigh in on what's going on in the agenda? No? How about online? Does anybody have any public comments? Okay, I think we're good. Any comments on the consent agenda?
No.
No.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, so Stephanie, is this you or is this John?
He's got the power to do the swearing, so.
That's right, I know, he loves to swear.
Yeah.
Does everybody know how much our sheriff loves to swear? People in?
Well, you don't really want to know what I say. Good morning. Uh, thanks for being here today. We just have a really short swearing in ceremony for our newest corrections deputy. So, uh, Alex Azavito, would you come up? I don't know what we're gonna do with this.
Just don't trip on it.
So, Alex, is there a newest corrections deputy just started a long ago?
A month ago.
So, we did a swearing in in my office, but we like to do one in public so that the family members can be here and, and, and. Ceremony will watch. And quickly, there's just a little information about Alex. Because Alex grew up in Pineville, and shortly after graduating from Kirk County High School, he decided to enlist in the Army, Oregon Army National Guard, where he spent seven years as a construction engineer and a motor transportation specialist. In 2013, Alex decided to start working in private security at the Facebook Data Center. While working there, he stayed on working in their security operations center, and as a security operations supervisor, was working with managing a great team of officers. Sounds like an info marshal in no way. Did you write this? Uh, Stephanie Azavito, last time he died, his family and friends had attended his local church to participate in different activities such as Bible studies and reboot, where we helped veterans undergoing military trauma. Deputy Azavito was excited about that, planning to work with the Kirk County Sheriff's Office and continue to serve his community. So Alex, the first part, you don't have to do anything, but just stand and listen. You went through this already, right?
Yeah.
So you know what's coming. So the appointment of Corrections Deputy Sheriff, Jail Division, and the Sheriff's Office for Kirk County, Oregon. State of Oregon, County of Crook. I, John Galtney, Sheriff of Kirk County, Oregon, am hereby appointed Alexander Azavito as a Corrections Deputy Sheriff for the Kirk County Sheriff's Office and in for Kirk County, Oregon, to do and perform those acts required of this discipline, which I might perform as sheriff. This appointment to be and remain in full enforcement effect during my pleasure. To raise your hand. I state your name.
I, Alexander Azavito.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The laws is ordinance, laws and ordinances of the county of Crook.
The laws and ordinance of the county of Crook.
And the rules and regulations of the Kirk County Sheriff's Office.
And the rules and regulations of the Kirk County Sheriff's Office.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will and.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duty to the office to which I've been appointed.
Discharge the duties.
To the office.
To the office of which I've been appointed to.
In and for the county of Crook.
In and for the county of Crook.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Ted. Yeah, I got my family over here.
Oh, I didn't introduce your family and forgot to.
Yeah, so my, my younger sister is here, her name's Mia, and my mom, Angelica, she's also here, so I want to say appreciate it to, to, to them that they're here and supporting me and, uh, my steps forward with the Sheriff's Office. So thank you.
How'd you do that? You blew out.
Somebody else.
You hang on, when you go back, you don't get that. There's no pins. There's a little blood comes out. So Alex, the other thing that we do at the office, we have a little tradition that we have a challenge coin that we issue to all members who come in new to the office. And the challenge coin is issued to you, not yours to keep, but as long as you live up to the ideals on this coin. It says honor, service, and justice, and above all, intelligence. As long as you work here and you follow those ideals, if you ever decide to leave, like in 30 years when you retire, you can take it with you. The other side of this coin is that you have to keep this on you. If someone comes up and challenges you and you don't have your coin, you gotta buy them lunch. If you have it on you and they challenge you, then you stay up to buy you lunch.
Thank you, sir.
All right, congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Hey, well, now we're moving on from somebody that's worked here for one month to somebody that's, to people that have worked here for over 20 years. So Brianna has and Sarah have done a great job getting this all lined out, and so they're going to present these awards, uh, and I just think it's such a great thing to have an organization with this many people that have been here this long. So, uh, thank you, guys, and look forward to seeing everybody come up here.
All right, so tenure holds a significant importance today as we wish to take this moment. Is that better? Like that? Okay. So today is important because we're going to celebrate and take a moment to express our gratitude for the hard work and commitment of every county employee. The individuals being honored today have been, have dedicated 20 years or more to Crook County. While some employees are acknowledged for their two decades of service, their tenure may range from 20 to 24 years to 30 to 35 years. This applies to all recognized service durations. Kirk County is seizing the chance to catch up right now with plans to honor employees every quarter starting March of 2025. As a gesture of thanks for your years of service, we have prepared a small token of appreciation. If you're present, please step forward as we announce your name. I think maybe the best thing would be for, I don't know, did we decide the commissioners would come down?
Sure.
Or? Um, so Mike McGrew from Juvenile Services, he has, he's being recognized for his 35 years of service. And I would also like to mention that I made the executive decision to make Mike McGrew our first employee of the month um, because he does have the longest standing tenure with the, with Kirk County. Um, in recognition of 30 years of service, Cass Raymond from the Road Department. Um, in recognition of her 25 years of service, Julie Lancaster from Community Development. And then in recognition of 20 years of service, which there's going to be multiple, uh, Bill Elliott from the Sheriff's Office, Tish Foster from the Sheriff's Office, Timothy Durheim from the Sheriff's Office, Wade Page from the Road Department, Gordon Chandler from the Road Department, Cindy York from our library, Randy Davis from Community Development, Rich Klute from the Road Department, Rebecca Ott from the Assessors Office, Sean Christopherson from the Assessors Office, Laura Flay Dunn from our Finance Department, and Chris Estes from Probation and Parole. And then our next two employees are being recognized a few weeks early as they are retiring. So in recognition of his 10 years of service. And Roger Chapman from Road Department, with also 20 years of service. And if everyone would just maybe stay, we're gonna take a picture and then also I have some other things over here to give you on your way out, so try not to run off yet. Um, and then our next two employees are being recognized a few weeks early, just because they are retiring, so Cam Teeter is being recognized for 10 years of service, but does have a total of 13 years of service since he's retiring. Um, and then Richard Evans from Community Development is being recognized for his five years of service, but has been with Kirk County for a total of seven years. Bless you. So I would like to just say congratulations on reaching this significant milestone. Your loyalty is greatly appreciated, and we feel privileged to work with you every day, and we do recognize you as a valued member of our team. Um, I don't know, do you guys want to take a picture with everyone or? What do you guys want to do? Where, where would you like to do it? Do you wanna? Do you? I don't know about that. Um, that's kind of what Sarah and I were thinking, if maybe we just took a couple minutes to go outside and take a photo? Okay. All right, that's what we'll do. Okay.
How are you, Brad?
Thank you, Brad, for going to that meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hey, thank you very, very much, because I'm going, like I say, to Springfield, so.
I'm gonna be, oh, never mind. Must let the cat out of the bag. Yes.
Yeah. Good job.
No, no, I just jammed her right back in.
You're good.
All right, uh, Christina?
Good morning, Commissioners. This is, um, a request for Jamie Berger's promotion from Budget Analyst to Budget Manager, as we discussed at the, um, work session. I believe, Eric, you may have to help me with the wording on this, but the request is to, um, allow Will to sign the personal action form similar to how we did the other ones.
So, uh, Commissioners, the issue here is, um, under the county's employee handbook, there's a particular method by which the Board of Commissioners would approve this type of increase, uh, and unfortunately, the, the county hasn't always been, uh, consistent in how it's applied that. Um, as Christina mentioned, there was something similar that the Commissioners approved, I want to say four weeks ago, so very recently. In which the Board of Commissioners delegated authority to Will as the manager, um, authority to sign these type of personal action forms. The personal action forms are a administrative tool to help the county keep track of what was approved, when it was approved, for whom it approves. Uh, includes things like the grade and step. One of the things I think the county is interested in doing when it has some overabundance of free time is update its employee handbook to find any sort of instance in which the current practice does not necessarily align with what is written in that document. This would be one example of that. Unless there's any kind of, uh, reservation, I am, I don't think there's any harm in the County Board of Commissioners um, making a motion to delegate authority to the county manager to sign the personal action form. As I said, going forward, we'll see if we can try to harmonize the current practice with what's written in the employee handbook, just as a matter of administrative, um, clarity.
Sounds good to me.
I make a motion to grant authority to Will Van Vactor to sign the PA for Jamie Berger.
Second.
Any discussion?
I want to say, uh, congratulations to Jamie. She's really stepped up and done a wonderful job, but I also want to congratulate everyone in finance, because I think you've all stepped up, and I very much appreciate, and the county very much appreciates your efforts. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you. We really appreciate that, and congratulations to Jamie on her promotion.
Well, we haven't voted yet.
Oh, yes, you're right. You gotta vote. Drop in the gun.
Don't jinx it.
Good.
I agree with Susie. You guys are doing a great job, and it's really fun to see. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Now she gets congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well, Will, uh, Will hasn't signed yet, but we're close.
Will, you want to chat about the letter we talked about?
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, yes, I would like to chat about this letter, so, um, I think your packet today is a, um, letter to Andy McAvoy, who works for Oregon State and has been tasked with um, putting the map, the wildfire risk map together. Um, and it's also addressed to Brandon Persinger, who works for AOC. Um, after the meeting that AOC coordinated last week that Commissioner Crawford attended, uh, we received an email from, um, from Brandon instructing us to send, uh, any follow-up correspondence to Andy and/or himself, so um, we're sending this letter to them in an effort to, um, really hammer home our concerns with the wildfire risk map. Just to highlight the issues that are identified in the letter, so, uh, we identify specific inconsistencies within Kirk County, such as lots within Versada Ranch and lots in Juniper Canyon where, these sort of anomalies occur where there are high-risk lots that are also in the wildland urban interface that are completely surrounded by, uh, lots that are only classified as moderate risk. We also highlight the inconsistencies within the map on a, on a more statewide level, so um, we point out the fact that Sun River and Black Butte are both moderate risk, and portions of Juniper Canyon, for example, are high risk when even staff from OSU acknowledge, uh, that there's grave risk involved in both Black Butte and Sun River in terms of the, the, the risk of a catastrophic fire. So we highlight that. Uh, we also talk about some of the due process concerns I have regarding, uh, first off, uh, the fact that property owners who are in the high-risk and wildland urban interface have not been notified yet, so they will only get notified after the, as I understand it, after the map becomes final, they'll have an opportunity of, of, to, to appeal within the first 60 days, but that requires going in front of an administrative law judge and basically trying to defend yourself in the first instance on appeal without the right to challenge, uh, the map before it becomes final. So basically, the state's convicting them of these, you know, I'm using a strong word there, but, uh, finding that their property is high-risk and in the wildland urban interface without an opportunity before that becomes final to say otherwise, or to argue otherwise. My other concern re- re- relating to the, the process is a lack of any opportunity for the next five to six years after that initial 60-day appeal period. My other concern relating to the, the process is a lack of any opportunity for the next five to six years after that initial sixty-day appeal period passes. There, there's no opportunity over the next five to six years for anybody to appeal or challenge the map. So if somebody does some good work creating defensible space around their property or eliminating vegetation that may pose a fire risk, there's no opportunity for them to have their property reclassified, which means they will be subject to the higher building standards and any sort of applicable defensible space requirements. So those are just kind of the highlights in the letter. My ask is that the Commission, the Board sign, sign the letter and we send it out as quickly as possible to Andy and Brandon and when that letter gets sent off, I will request a sit-down that Andy promised Commissioner Crawford last week. He said he hasn't reached out to me and I don't believe he's reached out to Commissioner Crawford either. So just want to make sure we have that opportunity to sit down with him for a couple hours and go through a long list of specific concerns we have here in Crook County. Any questions?
No, I, I agree with your letter. And I think it's a good letter. I, I think that there needs to have been more time and thought put into this and when you can compare Black Butte and more specifically the Pliny Country with Sun River as being a lower fire hazard than you know, some of the areas over here, especially Juniper Canyon then you know, definitely they didn't go to the scene and look. And there is no other way to push back on this. Or then just for the landowner to go through the time and expense to appeal. You know, is, is unfortunate also.
I agree.
I mirror all of Brian's comments and I think this is an extremely good letter and I thank you for getting it and I and yes, I'm, I, like I said, I mirror Brian's comments.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is if it does pass, I think we need to talk to our representatives about saying this, this, if, if it passes without them giving a legitimate look at, at what our issues are. Or at least giving the ability to tweak this stuff, I think we need to really push back and talk to the citizens and get them and say this isn't the right thing for our, our state or our community. But I think we'll know better once we have a conversation on one on the basis.
This is the final note. We, we have CC, the Governor's Office, Oregon Legislature and specifically Representative Iverson Breeze and Senator Finley. So we're trying to get the word out as we observed a year and a half ago or so, there was a lot of pressure when the map came out initially. The legislature directed, or the Oregon Department of Forestry to hit pause. I don't think this map is significantly better. I think it still poses a number of the same concerns that were raised initially. So I'd really like the state to take a, take a step back and consider a different approach. So like whatever we can do to put some pressure on our legislators to, to help us make that happen. Hopefully be helpful.
Yeah, and you know, and it's especially unfair to whomever wants to build because the building requirements are much more stringent. It's much more expensive, you know, I mean, it puts people against other people and, and where, where they live and discourages them from living in those areas. When it's unjust that they aren't having that possibility.
Yeah, and, and it puts our, you know, our community development staff in a position where they're trying to enforce whatever higher building code may be required without understanding why. Because the map isn't self-expanding story. You know, they, they're using an algorithm and probably an outdated aerial map. And so we, as local staff, have to try to interpret and explain that to the public. And I, I don't think we can do that in a meaningful way. With the map in its current, current state.
The fact that they have lakes designated as moderate wildfire, I really do think they need to go back and take a hard look. I'm sorry, but I agree with, like I say, I agree with everything. Uh, Brian, since I've made most of the motions, I don't want to seem like the so I'm in there.
I'm used to the second. I kind of like.
No, 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 I'm throwing this on you now.
Um, so I guess our motion would be to approve the letter that's been drafted by Will to be sent out to the parties concerning the wildfire hazardous map.
And I will second that motion. I do have one question. Do you think we should send it to, I know our, our two senators from the state of Oregon also just because there's no consideration of state and federal land and, and this wildfire map either and that what is out of, you know, that thing. So should we maybe just even do more?
Yeah, I think if, if we, I think we can send them a copy of the letter and in, in an email, kind of note that there's, that's not something I highlighted in the letter, but that's something we can highlight in the email to to their offices.
Okay.
The reality is there's, because there's not going to be a lot of designated wildland urban interface on our public lands because there, there should be a lot of development. In some, some instances, there will be, especially nearby existing development. They may not be significantly impacted by this map. But it's certainly something we can make them aware of. I'm happy to CC their, their offices.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Right. Eric and Kathy?
Commissioners, what's in front of you is a proposed agreement that the Oregon PERS Board has asked the county to sign. This is to memorialize in addition to the previously approved resolution that the deputy district attorneys are enrolled in PERS. You see in your agenda packets what PERS and the county have treated as the enrollment agreement. It is a summer fifth nineteen seventy-three resolution that reads more or less entirely effective July one nineteen seventy-four. Law enforcement personnel will be enrolled in public employee retirement system. No prior service credit granted. Pretty threadbare. PERS has asked that the county approve this agreement. We have reviewed it for legal sufficiency. Uh, one thing I would like to point out is section five which describes the initial contributions. And what sort of percentages will need to be contributed by the county into PERS system. Unless you have any sort of procedural or legal questions. And unless Kathy thinks I've left anything out, I think this is ready for signature.
That's good to me. Any questions?
I guess my question would be in passing this, you have two orders on here. Were those two orders already passed? How would a motion be made? To just, to just make a motion to approve the amendment? Or are we actually going back into the orders?
You're not going back.
Okay, those were just for information.
So one of those orders is two thousand eighteen seventy.
Yes.
So it is seventy-one. That discusses the option for those who are enrolled in PERS to make use of a particular sick leave program. Um, the county has previously decided that the deputy district attorneys can participate in that program on the same terms and conditions as other county employees who are enrolled in PERS. Uh, the second resolution is the resolution from, I want to say June. Um, where the Commissioners voted to enroll uh, the deputy district attorneys into PERS. So this agreement makes reference to that. But it does not change either one of those resolutions.
Okay. Kathy, did you have anything?
Going along with Eric, looked good to me.
Okay.
Yeah, everything looked fine.
Okay. Well then I make a motion to approve the amendment to the county's participation resolution in PERS system to add deputy district attorneys to PERS. Is that acceptable as a motion? Okay.
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Brian's a nay.
Alrighty, interim manager report?
Uh, just one, one quick note, uh, next week. Uh, as I think you all know, we have a ice cream social planned on September twelfth. Um, so I just want to make sure for the folks who are listening online that they know, uh, that this is a, a great opportunity for us all to get together and, and spend some time with folks who work here at the county outside of our, our normal daily uh, interactions with our own, own department. So just want to note that that is scheduled and I'm looking forward to it and hope everybody can attend. I know some folks' schedules won't allow it, but this is something we're looking forward to doing on a more regular basis. So I want to thank Sarah and Brianna for helping get that all organized.
Should be a pretty exciting day. Should come down and check it out.
There'll be some games and most importantly, some ice creams.
Yeah.
See the weather will be.
Some big, big ice creams.
Uh, and I think that's all I had for you this morning.
Wait, anybody else?
I was going to say, I got several calls last night from the Plana area. The Powell Mountain Fire had a seven-mile front that was reaching from the Humphrey, which was the Ray Sessler Ranch, which is now the Michael Stafford Ranch, all the way to the Schnebley Ranch. Federal resources finally arrived last night. I sent, basically it's cowboys on caterpillars. I sent our cat and low bed up there. If you know Sunflower Flat or any of the people, the Bernard Historic Cabin, basically it's black toothpicks. That's all gone. It's, it's a very hot fire. It's moving very rapidly. It's at sixty-one thousand acres. So if you have a time to pause today, let's, you know, keep our, our landowners up there and our guys up there and our thoughts. And it's very, very devastating and we need to manage our forests much, much better. Much better. So we don't have these sort of things happening.
Yeah, uh, that's actually a really good segue. Um, we have recently been talking with the Forest Service and some conservation groups about purchasing a very large private ranch. And I think it's extremely important that the county come out against that. Uh, I am totally against the federal government purchasing more land in Crook County. And I think we as a county should engage the congressman and talk to them about what we can do to have a united front to stop the federal lands from expanding in our county. You guys have any thoughts on that?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say what I said to Seth yesterday on this subject. There's twenty-six, I'm going to just say twenty-six thousand roughly citizens in Crook County. I feel that we haven't had public input and what, what my feelings are doesn't matter. It matters what the taxpayers' feelings are. So I would like to see more public input. And then yes, I would move aggressively in the direction that the public, that is our employers, want us to do. So that is my thought on this. This was a quick thing that was supposed to make a funding request. I believe that was last Friday. Forestry is setting and their stakeholders are sitting back for a year. So I, and my suggestion to them was that it needs to come out in written form. It needs to go out in social media. There needs to be public meetings. And then that is, that would be the way that I would measure my vote. I have a personal vote, but I also have a lot of bosses. So that's kind of my thoughts on that subject.
Well, I can tell you that there've been a lot of people that have signed a petition in town.
Yes.
That are very aggressively against it. So I, I think the public is speaking and I think we need
That's good.
Hear that.
That's good.
So.
I just think we're a little too premature until we know what the bulk of our citizenry wants.
Yeah, I kind of mimic Susan in a lot of aspects. You know, I have multiple feelings about it. Number one, I feel like the landowner has the right to sell his property as anyone else has a right to do it. So I think that's his right. I don't feel that it's up to me to come in and dictate who and what he can sell his property for. So I, I have a little hesitant to be involved in it in that respect. I spent, you know, some time talking to Kevin and Chris and Forest Service. You know, I, I respect their enthusiasm for wanting to purchase that property and do things with it. I told them and telling everyone today, I think that it was premature. They were trying to rush through and do something and I think that needs to be more public debate about it and more public talk about it. But we still need to remember that property belongs to a landowner. I'm not wild about the Forest Service purchasing it. I sometimes have my reservations on a lot of the management and things and I typically not for the government purchasing more property just to purchase it. Um, I, you know, I believe in personal land ownership. I believe that it's from a county standpoint, or my personal opinion on a county standpoint is that there's tax revenue that's gone that we won't receive. I think there are other and better uses to that property and it may not be agriculture. I've been in it for four decades or four generations. And so I understand when you know, it takes somebody with some money to come in and buy that, you wouldn't catch me buying it and being able to pay for it. Um, you have to have money to do it. And so uh, it's not going to be open for everybody. It's going to be a select few that can purchase that nine thousand twenty acres. So I, you know, I think it's too soon to come out and take a stance. I think also that ultimately this may come back to this Board of Commissioners that we have to make some decisions. And at that point, I don't want to blacken those waters and not be able to make any decisions that need to be made. So I think that I, if people don't want it, then I think it's their God-given right to be able to oppose it and fight against it. And I certainly wouldn't get in their way, nor will I get in the way of the Forest Services to proceed on it. That's.
Definitely. The only thing I would say is you're not, because it's the Forest Service, we do have powers, the government, to say that they should not be purchasing it for the reason that I'm, I'm like, I, I guess I don't know the total reason, but my guess is to stop the Forest Service from expanding too much. Counties that are already fifty percent owned by the Forest. So it's not, we're not saying somebody can't buy it. We're just saying that we don't think the federal government should take it over. And I think that's, that's where I agree with you that if it was a private buyer and I didn't like that private buyer, I, I wouldn't be having a conversation about it because at that point, then you could have people that didn't like the people that I liked that were buying it. And that could be a problem. But what we're talking about is the federal government expanding in Oregon and in the county. And that's what I'm not talking. That would, that would be annoying.
And you know, as I, as I told Kevin and Chris, you know, you should come up with a plan. I mean, you may have some good reasons and good things that a lot of the public might enjoy. I mean, there's a variety of things that they could do to develop that property that could, all the citizens of the area would, you know, would, would enjoy doing. And, and anything would be more than what they're doing now on the private properties. Because it's locked up. It's a gate. It's no trespassing and you're arrested for trespass. So it does open up a land base. Not that I'm for it, but I'm just saying there, there are a lot of things to think about before I'm going to make a rash decision.
I mean, the only thing I would say that's, that's relying on what they say, which I don't think the actual people would lie, but I think that the way that the Forest Service works is that they continue to evolve like we see fifty years ago to today and from today to fifty years, I would be very concerned of them being in charge versus a private citizen.
I would hope that with the catastrophic fires that are hope, that are happening in the West right now, that there is the start of an evolution of change in how our federal land is managed. And, you know, the environmentalists and the forest and the public need to get together, but I do mirror Ryan's comment, the most important thing to Brian's comment, the most important thing to me is private property rights. And again, we need to respect that and we also need to respect what the public of our, and, and right now it's been a discussion in our offices and it hasn't been brought out with the information or any of that to the public and without that no, I'm not willing to rule or whatever until more knowledge is out there, we see the pulse of what the people want because it's their tax dollars. And again, while respecting private property rights. So, yeah, that's just my two cents, too soon.
Anything else? No, all right, any public comment?
Everybody looks pretty quiet out there.
Okay, we will now go to executive session. The Crook County Board of Commissioners will now meet in executive session under ORS one nine two six six zero two H consulting with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives in the news media designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session, all other members of the audience are asked to Representatives, representatives of the news media are specifically directed to not report on any deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced, no decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, return to open session, welcome the audience back in the room. Through ORS one nine two six six zero two H consulting with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation, litigation likely to be filed, representatives in the news media designated staff should be allowed to attend the executive session. All other, all other members of the audience are asked to, representatives in the news media are specifically directed not to report any deliberations during the executive session. Staff to say the general subject of the session is previously announced, no decision may be made in the executive session, at the end of the executive session, return to open session, welcome the audience back in the room.
Could you help me with the motion that I'm about ready to make here?
I might suggest based on conversation. A motion to direct staff to prepare the letter to counterparty and to authorize the Board of Commissioners to sign outside of the meeting.
Aye, so move.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anything else? Turn. Good luck today.